All right, good evening everyone, welcome to the Wytham School Committee. School Committee meeting Monday, September 25th, 2017 at 6:00 PM in the Harvey Hearing Room. Ms. Hams, would you please call the role? Mr. Beckia?
Present.
Mr. Kapabianko?
Present.
Dr. Callis here. Mr. Sanford, sorry. Mr. Perrin?
Here.
Ms. Sullivan?
Here.
Ms. Littary?
Here.
This meeting will be recorded and maybe televised live. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get into our agenda tonight, I'd like to welcome Council Littary to the table tonight. I heard at the last minute that President Sanford was unable to attend tonight's meeting and he wanted to have Council Littary here tonight to be present and to be able to be a liaison to the town council meeting and report anything that you hear tonight to the next town council meeting. Mr. Littary will not be a voting member tonight, he'll mainly be here to listen in. Thank you, welcome. Next, we have delegates and visitors. Superintendent Howard?
Sure. So tonight, I would like to ask Mr. Frank Nitti to give us a little bit of an overview on our discussion early on about the solar panels. I had the opportunity to meet with Frank to talk about sort of the past and what has gone on with that proposal, the thought process leading forward, looking at our electric bills and sort of making some comparisons over the past few months. I felt that having him come in and just to give us an update on where he thinks we're at so that we can, in the future, make some informed decisions moving forward. So Frank, if you'd like to come up, we can have you sit right here. That way you'll be able to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council, for having me. So I wanted to give everyone an update on the solar panels. I know quite a ways back at this point, we had started to look at proposals for that and we got pretty far along. Unfortunately, what ended up happening was the solar installer had a number of financiers kind of turn over, leave, no longer work on their projects. And the company that came in that they ended up working with has not really done any projects in the municipal space. So there were some contract terms as part of the power purchase agreement that were not favorable to the town and they were not willing to move or negotiate with us on some of those terms. So we ended up not wanting to move forward with that and put ourselves at a disadvantage with that project. Since that time, on the state level, there's been a lot of activity with the new solar incentive program that is being developed as well as when the current solar incentive program is going to be ending. And essentially, they've been consistently pushing the end date back and back and back. And where we find ourselves now is that the SREC II program, the current incentive program, is going to be ending. They want all projects that are currently in the pipeline to qualify for that to complete by March 31st of 2018. The new program that they've developed, the SMART program they're calling it, has already been approved on the regulatory side. So it's been submitted and approved and right now it has gone before, it's been submitted to the Department of Public Utilities for approval. Now, they're expecting that the DPU is going to approve that by that March 31st date and that's why they've determined that as the end date of the current SREC II program. So what I am here today to request is essentially that we propose waiting to issue an RFP to move forward with looking at solar projects until the new SMART program incentive level is announced. They are going to be determining the incentive level, the Department of Energy Resources tells me, by the end of the year or early 2018. They're determining the incentive level based off of RFPs and projects that the utilities are doing on the very large greenfields electricity generation level. So they're going to use those to determine what the incentive level is and they expect that RFP process to be completed by the end of the year or early 2018. So the reason for this being, at this point, I don't believe you'd be able to issue an RFP, find an installer, come up with a proposal, you know, contract terms and everything and have substantial completion by that March 31st date. Also, if the DPU does approve the program earlier than March 31st, the SMART program will start as soon as they approve it. So it could actually even be before that March 31st date. And we don't want to put ourselves in a situation where that new program starts up and we've shoehorned ourselves into working with one particular installer who now we, you know, have to use whatever price they determine. So I think it would be the best bet for us to wait till the new incentive pricing comes out and then go out and get our financial proposals on the project at that point.
So I felt that, thank you very much, I felt that the update was important because I was not here for the initial sort of rollout or understanding of how this would be beneficial or not be beneficial for the school district, which I think the school committee, you know, certainly will have a job ahead of itself as well as I will when we are able to figure out sort of what that RFP would look like, who it would go out to. And then, of course, it would come back to the school committee for further discussion as to whether or not there would be a move forward in that direction. I just didn't want to sit on it and not have sort of an update as to where we may be headed with it and give people some information knowing why we're not ready to move forward with any type of an RFP just yet. And then when we are ready to move forward, sort of rolling out the next steps involved in that process, once we get some information back and be able to vet that out to see if it would be a benefit to the school, how much benefit it would be. And also looking at warranties and having this new building and placing structures on top of the new building, what would be the effect of that on our new building. So that would be for the attorneys, the town attorneys, to sort of vet that back and forth. But I felt at least an update to know where we were at would be helpful.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Nitti?
In the previous proposal, we did determine that using a ballasted system, which basically means that the panels sit on top of bricks essentially, that that would not void any warranty on the roofing material. We did verify that with the roofer. Of course, we would want to go back through that process again whenever we bring on a new installer so that we make sure that their construction and model also does not void it. But typically for a ballasted system, we wouldn't have any issue with that.
Great. And just to remind the community, just about a year ago, you came to present and there was a very short window that we were encouraged to approve placement on the new high school. And after the town attorneys looked at it, they decided it wasn't the right contract for us. So I'm glad we're relooking at it again. I would like to make sure that Mr. Safuni is in on the conversations.
Of course.
Moving forward as he, I would guess, would be sort of responsible for oversight with any new solar panels on, any town building.
Absolutely.
Any questions?
No, I just think, you know, you mentioned about the fact that they, you talked to the roofer that, you know, the bricks would be fine. I think you'd have to have a complete sketch of what you're putting there before you actually get approval.
Of course.
It would have to be completely reviewed before we, you know, sign off on it.
Yeah. And the last proposal that we did have, we had the full picture of what the construction and development would look like and that's why we were able to get that response from the roofer at that time. So what I'd like to do is, I've already kind of pre-drafted an RFP that was given to me by our legal counsel, that he's used in other towns. So I've started to pre-populate that so that once we essentially get the announcement that the new incentive value pricing has been determined, you know, we can be pretty nimble with getting back in front of you and have something ready to go for you guys to review.
Awesome.
Sounds good, yes.
Is this, are we just looking at the middle high school or are we looking at all the buildings?
So the original installer that we had that was looking at this project, they were brought on by an RFP that was done by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. So as part of that procurement, they had done a look, a solar energy assessment for all of the buildings in town. At this point, generally because those contracts, they do for 20 years out to get the most value and that way, you know, we get the most value out of it as well as paying off the installation and development costs over that lifetime of the contract. They like to have the roofs not be too old so that you're not pulling panels up and having to re-roof and do things like that. So based on the assessment that we had gotten previously, some of the roofs here were a little older than they generally look for to go out for a 20-year contract on solar.
So does that mean we rule out completely, looking at these other buildings?
So at this point, I would say that unless we were to lay down some roofing material, you know, they have all sorts of different sprays and roll-on type materials, but generally we would have to re-roof in sections that we would want to do this at this point. Other buildings, it might even be a structural issue because when the buildings were constructed, the hundred-year storm load, weight loads were very different to what they are now. So adding solar panels in some cases with some buildings will put us over the snowload requirement for state building codes and things like that. So that's kind of a combination of the two, but for the most part, it would be needing to re-roof sections of.
So we would have to incur that cost before we even think about putting solar?
Correct, yeah. I think what I can do is when we do bring on a new installer, it's worth having them take a look and do a new assessment. And then if the financial benefits incorporate to some degree, you know, if we're able to still be on the plus side of also re-roofing, so if we take into consideration the cost of the re-roof in the building, then the cost of the solar installation and then look back on how much financial benefit we're going to get from the solar. If we're still, you know, a net positive on that, then I certainly think it might be worth pursuing. There's another side of this as well that I want to look at for the new middle high school as well in this RFP is battery storage capability for schools. So the schools are all on time of use accounts. What that means is they look at it, at what we're using on a 15-minute or hourly basis rather than one whole day like this building would be. So they charge us what we are actually requesting be available in electricity on the grid compared to what we're actually using. They actually charge us for both, for time of use accounts. So the idea behind battery storage, especially in conjunction with solar, is that the electricity that you generate from the solar, you can then store in the battery and then during the peak periods of the day when your building and everybody else is demanding more and more energy, we can power parts of the building like our laning, our air conditioning off of what we have stored in the battery rather than requesting it from the grid and offset a considerable chunk of those demand charges. I would like to look at that as a potential option under this RFP. It may very well be that, you know, that the installation cost for solar, for solar storage is very expensive and it may just work out financially at this point, but I certainly think it's worth pursuing within the RFP to get an idea of what that would look like.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm going to be, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure, my pleasure.
Look forward to having you back.
Absolutely.
The next group up for our delegates would be Mr. Brian Harity and his group to sit here and speak with you for about 10 minutes about PBIS. I know I was a little, maybe a little overly last week, the last time we met about the particular rollout for our students, but I think it's an exciting time for us in looking at what we're doing at the pre-K to school, the three to five school in terms of social emotional learning for our students. So I can have you guys slide up here and I'll move over so you can have the microphone. Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Thanks for having us. We, we've been talking with Lisa over the last few weeks, couple months, about something new we're implementing at the school, which is PBIS. And it was part of an administrative practice goal that Mrs. Pearson at the Ford Banks and Jen O'Connell and myself, we had teamed up last year to kind of evaluate our social emotional programming in the school and decide, you know, are we meeting the needs of our kids? Are our current programs meeting the needs of our kids? And if not, what programs are research-based, effective, that we can be implementing, that we could roll out, that teachers would buy into and so forth. So we researched several different programs and we went to a couple of different schools and we looked at responsive classroom and we looked up a couple of different programs and then we looked at our current second step program. And then we went to a school that was implementing PBIS and they were designing some of their own social emotional learning lessons to complement the PBIS structure. So PBIS is something that's kind of talked about a lot and so we thought that we could give you a little brief overview of it so you hear directly from us about what the program is and how it's working and how it's research-based and, you know, kind of hear about how excited we are about it. So that's kind of the gist of our presentation tonight. But we're going to keep it real brief. We know you've got a lot to discuss, but we're going to display something, but do you mind if I show a little video on my computer and you watch it from there? Is that okay?
Wish we knew how to hook it up to our monitor up there.
Wow Kurt, that's something I would add.
I mean, I might be able to do it if you want to give me two minutes to try. Is that easier?
I mean, I think it'd be better for maybe we can talk a little bit, everyone's heard that. Yeah?
Sure. So PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Support. And so one of the things the faculty at the ATC did at the end of the year last year was to come up with our behavior matrix. And we identified areas in the building that, and behaviors we wanted to see in those areas that aligned to our core value system at the school. And we tried to keep positive, first letter in PBIS. And then we did edits at the beginning of the year and over the summer, the PBIS team finalized this. These posters were created and are hanging in every classroom in the building. And tied to that matrix is our incentive system.
Yeah, sure. So one of the things we implemented this year was an incentive that everyone's going to use to kind of unify our school. So rather than one teacher giving out a reward system and another giving out, you know, some sort of token or gift, you know, whatever, we decided to do these tokens, which every teacher's using, every staff member of the school. So whether it's the lunch monitor or the speech therapist or a classroom teacher, these are incentives. So we look for positive behavior that matches or aligns our, sorry. You can put it down. And each month, we're kind of focusing on a different area. So right now, we're focusing on persevere and there's many lessons that kind of go along with that. So if we notice that a kid is persevering in one of these areas or in one of the, you know, in the lunchroom, they get a token. And then the tokens go to the classroom jar, which then leads to an incentive that the class votes on. And those could be like an extra, you know, a dance party and music or free time in art or, you know. Crazy hair day. Crazy hair day or bring your stuffed animal. And the kids really responded to it well this first month so far. I think they, they just, you know, it's because it's unified throughout the whole school, they, you know, they're responding to it a little well. And the other thing that we're handing out are these postcards, which is just like if you go above and beyond.
My favorite part.
Yeah.
I'll tell you why.
So like if you notice, if it kind of, you know, warrants a token, that's one thing, but then if it's like even more above and beyond, we have been giving out these postcards to students and the teachers are keeping track of, you know, which students they're handing them out to so that eventually every student will hopefully go home with a postcard. And it's just a little way of saying like, we noticed and it goes home and it can be put on the fridge and.
Parents get to see it. I think that's an important piece is that it gets, the parent gets to understand that yes, the students get tokens, yes, they get to put them in the jar, which leads to a larger class perhaps activity. But that card coming home saying that your child is an ATC rock star promotes conversation about why. And it's not just students that typically get, you know, the high five every day or the student that typically gets, typically gets the A-plus in behavior and effort. It can be for any student in the school that somebody recognizes as having just the best day.
And I understand it's not just teachers that are giving out the tokens. Correct, yeah. Like any staff member. And then the other thing we kind of implemented as well is that the kids have a kindness jar that they can do at lunch. So if a student notices something that another student's doing or, you know, they saw a friend help a friend, they are allowed to put a little note in the kindness jar saying, I saw so-and-so. And then we kind of recognize those students as well. So the students are participating in recognizing positive behavior as well, not just the staff, not just the parents, you know, it's everybody kind of involved in rewarding that positive behavior.
That's awesome, yeah. I think the big, I think the big shift is before, you're kind of looking for kids that are doing the wrong thing. And so like if you're looking at the cafeteria and there's 150 kids in the caf, you're looking for the kid that's throwing food or the kid that's, you know, not picking up his trash or whatever. But now, when you're scanning the whole crowd, you're looking for the kids that are doing the right thing. And that gives you a chance to walk over to that child's table and say, you know what, I really appreciate that you picked up all your trash, you're doing everything you're supposed to be doing. And then all the other kids around explicitly hear that this is the expectation, this is what you get recognition for. You get attention if you're doing the right thing. And so they kind of start to shift their behavior.
The common language piece, I think Ryan is so important. So that students and staff members, from cafeteria staff members to custodial staff members to the nurse to speech-language pathologists, anyone in the building is aware of the common language that is used. So as we all know, children need routines and they like things that are predictable. And so if all the adults are using a similar language where you're asking a whole line of students to get into ninja mode, which I'm school-bought by a 10-year-old, I can tell you that, to get into ninja mode, you're not pointing out the one child in the line that has the wiggles and that's always being told to stop and slow down. My son pointed out that I, he said, Mom, do you know what ninja mode is? This happened to me today and I got a token, I went into ninja mode and I said, what's ninja mode? And I won't give you his full vocabulary, but he said, wow, Mom, you're the superintendent of the schools, how do you not know what ninja mode is? And I didn't know what it was, however, I wanted the conversation to be a little bit deeper and recognizing the fact that he did listen and they didn't have to call his name. And he got into ninja mode because everybody was being asked to be in ninja mode. I just think it's so, it's so positive and so powerful and catchy and I applaud the staff for taking it because this is not an easy feat. This is an entire summer and before of planning and getting teachers to be key stakeholders in the whole entire process. And we're not telling people what to do, we've invited them, Ryan and his staff has invited people to get together to talk about the culture of their building and positive reinforcement and social emotional learning. And with everybody on the same page, the implementation and the rollout is faster, it's more efficient, the buy-in is, you know, whole staff. So I'm excited about it. Very similar activities that happen at the pre-K to school with Ms. Pearson and she'll talk about that at another time, same philosophy. And now just rolling out through the school district.
I have the parent video, so I was just going to show you the parent information video.
And if you want to, is this on the ATC website or is there a way for parents to watch it at home?
It is, actually. The slides from our information night are posted on our webpage. And so within the slides, there's a couple of slides on PBIS and the video is embedded in there so they can just watch the video. Sometimes the video is easier to kind of than listening to us ramble on about something.
Is it something that people can watch on YouTube also or like kind of Google it or is it, they're better off going to your ATC website?
Yeah, I would say just go directly to our website and click on our slides for our curriculum night and then you'll be able to see them.
Because it was created uniquely to match what we're doing at the ATC rather than a PBIS information video on generalities.
Great, okay.
Yeah. All right. Let's see how.
So while he's cueing that, the understanding that this is a social emotional learning program that's embedded throughout every piece of our curriculum all day long, it's not something we do for 10 minutes a day, this is.
Okay, that's it.
There it is.
That's great. I would encourage any parent probably in any of the grades really to check it out. We're only using it right now at ATC, we're starting to roll it out at Gorman or.
So the Gorman Ford Banks School has a very similar program with the same philosophy. PBIS happens to be the group that we're using at the ATC, very similar, they call it SMART. And Ms. Pearson rolls out the same type of incentive program that's appropriate for students at that age level.
Right.
The next step would be to, once we have it up and running here and you have our own internal experts, would be to begin that rollout at the middle school level at some capacity. And of course, you roll it out differently in every level depending upon the age level of the students. But it's, because it's such a data-driven program in theory, it's very, it's very powerful in terms of how it helps students just throughout every aspect of the day. But I can't say enough about the staff and the amount of work it takes to get it up and running and to embed it in what it is that you're doing during math, during science, during social studies and still having it happening and at the same time, you're actually doing some additional teaching and content.
Well, that's fantastic. We've been working towards this for a long time, so thank you for your hard work. Mr. Beckia?
You know what I'd love to see? You know, we have a brand-new TV studio in the new building. I'd like to see if we get some students, you know, communication students to produce little programs incorporating these videos that we can show on Viking TV. I mean, it's easier for them to watch it on Viking TV than going on the internet or YouTube. Those are the types of things I'd like to see us get more involved in and this is the perfect opportunity, programs like this, to get it out to the parents.
Good idea. Sure.
I just had a question. You said that it was data-driven, are people recording who's getting tokens?
Yeah.
Wow, and that's manageable for staff too, right?
Yeah, so what we're doing is we're recording incentives just for our own purposes to collect data. The students work collectively as a class to earn tokens and earn incentives. We also have developed an office referral form for students who might need tier two or tier three interventions for behavior. The tier one system is only going to work for 85% of our students, so the other 15%, 10% may fall in tier two and five and tier three. But this office referral forum allows us to track the time of day that behaviors are escalating, where they're occurring most, so that then we can target our SEL lessons for the following week or the following month for those areas or for those core values that we feel are being most impacted.
And looking, looking at referrals to the office, looking at how many times we're having to send students out of the classroom, things like that are very trackable in terms of discipline. So it'll be interesting to see.
I will say this year, it's been, I'm going to jinx myself, but this year, the amount of students coming down to the office has been, I mean, it's been, what, two kids the whole year? I mean, it's been like very, very minimal, so it's, it's been a change.
One of the things too, that a lot of the teachers have pointed out, that not necessarily were a part of our committee, but have noticed the noise levels. were a part of our committee, but I've noticed the noise levels in different rooms or in the hallways, like I think last year, one of the biggest issues was like those hallways and up and down the stairways where you might not have like, you know, teachers kind of in their offices or rooms and so this year it's like night and day.
Yeah.
Absolutely can tell there's a difference.
With ninja mode?
Yes, yeah, they really are and they know it and they can hear them talking about it.
But that's our common language, because I think that it gets embedded in students.
Yeah, and what's great is when the kids are coming down to the office for a behavior referral, you know, we take a look at the matrix and I ask them why they're there and so it allows me to build in that restorative justice piece where the kids are able to identify, well, I wasn't persevering in my classroom, you know, in, because I was doing X, Y, and Z and then we talk about how we can fix that or correct that and then go back and be successful in the classroom, so it allows us to have that conversation, it gives us that language to do so.
Great, well, kids definitely do more of what you pay attention to, right? Anything else? Thank you so much for.
Thank you, thank you so much for having us tonight.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have correspondence, we have a letter from Ms. Leslie Spiny Hatch. Mrs. Hatch contacted me last spring regarding the same request and then she's contacted me again, I did let her know last spring that we had a moratorium on kind of naming of things, but a closer look, the superintendent and I, along with speaking to Mrs. Hatch, have wanted to bring this to the school committee tonight to take a look at her family in honor of Robert Ronald L. Spiny, was the head coach of Winter High School Girls Basketball Team from nineteen seventy-three to nineteen seventy-four until the two thousand and one, two thousand and two season and he had a record of four hundred and two wins, a hundred and ninety-four losses, four hundred and two of these wins earned in the spot in the Massachusetts Basketball Coaches Association Victory Club, she lists several credentials and really what this is a request for, not so much a naming of an area, but they'd like to donate some of the memorabilia and I thought that this was appropriate at this time to bring this to the school committee for a vote tonight, I, I could certainly read the whole letter if people haven't had a chance to look at it, if you'd like me to.
I read it.
You, you read it, people read the.
I actually spoke to one of the daughters.
Great, yeah.
She had called me.
Yeah.
I think, you know, the concept, again, this is not really the naming of a facility, I think the whole concept is, is really a great idea, not, not for just Ron Spiny, but when you look at all the great coaches that have served us, maybe we should come up with like a hallway at the, at the high school where all the cases are, maybe we could put a case aside for each one and either the family or some organization that's involved, you know, they could come in and present things, whether they're photos or trophies or whatever, I think it's a great idea.
So let me just read this last paragraph so that the committee knows what their request is, "A display at the new Winter High School, Winter Middle School, near the gymnasium lobby trophy cases with a brief biography, photo, and some essential career statistics. While Coach Spiny has recently donated some of his trophies to the high school, he retained a cherished and decorated basketball gifted to him and adorned with the date of his four-hundredth win. This would make a nice visual for display and a meaningful, consistent addition to the school archives. The family would be proud to donate this in honor and tribute to him." So I would like to make a motion that we accept this donation and along with the principal, find an appropriate location in the trophy cases, I do know that there's still room in some of the trophy cases that would be most appropriate for the display.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Beckia, is there any discussion on the motion? Dr. Callis?
I have, so one thing that we, that happened last year was during all the moves, the trophies got misplaced and I know some community members were upset and we had established a policy for keeping track of where everything is in a different building, so I wanted to make sure that, it sounds like the decorated basketball is really important to the family, so I wanted to make sure that that process is working or started or.
There's some documentation of receiving and displaying.
Or, you know.
And I think that was gonna go through the principal and the athletic director or?
I think that's.
Do you remember on the, on the policy? I think it was the principal and athletic director.
Yeah, I think it was the principal, so I believe the athletic director, if I may, I believe the athletic director has an accurate account now of trophies that are in his possession and we had talked briefly in my last meeting with him about rotating in certain cabinets, we've had some other requests of people and thoughts about why certain trophies were not displayed, why some are, why some are not, so for not our next meeting, but the meeting right after that, Mr. Serino and myself are sitting down just to review what he has in his, on his list, but I think adding this to that list so that we know what is really the property of the school and then determining how those display cases are going to look. Right now there are trophies kind of random, randomly displayed, but there have been a number of people who have asked, is there gonna be a basketball section, is there gonna be a softball section and certainly, you know, now with the dedication of this four-hundred win, Coach Ron Spiny was a coach of mine, full disclosure, in the nineteen eighty-four state championship team, he was the coach of that team and his wins are important, but more important is, is how he displayed, how he portrayed himself as a parent and a, and a teacher and a coach and somebody who has lived in with him his entire life and raised his family here, so having that in the display case I think is more than appropriate, but keeping track of it, as you say, is very valuable to him, we want to make sure those cases are, are secure and locked and so that there could be, you know, hopefully nothing could happen to some of those items, but having an accurate map and we talked about how we would be rolling out some of the changing over of those by season if we could, so make sure that this is on his list in terms of what we have in our, you know, in our budget.
Mr. Caballero?
I think this is also very appropriate, deserving, but I think in the coming months we also need to consider the other coaches such as, you know, Coach Usillo, Dee Felice, and Pat McGee as well and this general area as well.
Mr. Parent?
I had Mr. Spiny for mathematics, he's a great teacher and it's a fitting tribute to him to have his four-hundredth win there, but as we go forward on these and we look at, at creating these honors, I think we need to have a vetting process and maybe a committee set up so we, or a policy set up so we, you know, it's not the first time we see it or, you know, and we can vet it through, I mean, Mr. Spiny is one of the most deserving people I know and I just think, cause we're gonna get a lot more of these as time goes by.
Perhaps having some parameters around.
Yeah.
We just set a policy.
No, but I mean, I was thinking to have a committee set up so that we can actually vet these through.
Like a subcommittee before it gets to us.
Right, before it gets to the final, so we can, we can vet these, cause we do get a lot of them.
Any further discussion? Like to have a vote on the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, I was in contact with Mrs. Hatch, I know you are Superintendent Howard, and the family chose not to be here tonight, but during any dedication or presentation of the memorabilia, they would like to be present and have some kind of reception or something, so we'll make sure that that happens.
Howard, you jump in.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have public comments.
Steve Malakis preaching five, I apologize, I missed Mr. Dade's proposal, I was coming back a little later, but I'm, I do build, uh, public buildings, build a lot of schools and one of the things that I've, I've seen in the past, a lot of schools have actually shied away from solar panels because of the cost, I might get in touch, like the city of New England actually just put a moratorium on solar panels because of the cost, is braying that after the payback, there's also a lot of things you may wanna think about, if you look after audits, we'll look at, you know, some of the hanging fruit, changing light fixtures, resetting temperatures, chillers, temperatures, water temperatures, that have a greater payback with less cost, like I said, I apologize, I missed his, his proposal, I do think, you know, solar is a, is a great thing, but you really need to look at the cost benefit before, I know there are some, there are some easier things to do to actually have a really good benefit as well and that's all I just wanted to say.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Is there any other public comment tonight? Saying no further public comment, we'll move on to the minutes from September eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, these minutes were in your packet for review, I'll make a motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Mr. Beckia, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor to approve, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. On to financial and business procedures, we have warrants tonight. We have warrant SBW one-eight-five in the amount of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents, I'll make a motion to approve, is there a second? Second. Second by Dr. Callis, any discussion on the warrant? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously, we have a payroll warrant tonight, SPW one-eight-two in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents, is there a motion to approve? Motion, motion by Dr. Callis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Caballero, any discussion on the payroll warrant? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Budget transfers, we have budget transfers in our packet for review, Superintendent Howard, you wanna make any comments or discussion about this?
Yes, this budget transfer is, is being asked for as we are going through the budget now, month to month, I have met with Susan as well as Michael and talked about cleaning up some of our lines so that we're not asking for budget transfers in May and so as needed we are keeping track of, in this case it's custodial supplies and, and maintenance contracts and just making sure if there's a little bit of money left in one line that we're not leaving it there until the end of the school year that we're actually using it to pay current bills, so Susan has put together for us some decreasing of a few lines that we know that we've already paid, what we needed out of those lines and then moving them to an additional, to some additional lines, so if you look at custodial supplies at the Gorman Fort Banks, we found the need to increase by three hundred dollars, so we went to a secondary line that existed where we had a three hundred dollar balance in supplies and are just asking to have that money moved. Flood insurance at the high school, bill has come in for less than that, so we have paid that bill and we do have a need at the high school for some professional development activities, so in meeting, my weekly meetings with principals, this has become a targeted area for Mr. Corombe where he would like to focus the balance of that money towards professional development and I, I have agreed with that. Custodial service at the Cummings, we are asking to move some of them out of a maintenance line into a custodial service contract line, just to balance that line out, same at the middle school as well at the high school, so it's money that is in the budget and we're just keeping a real tight eye on each line item and because I have the opportunity to sit with the principals, we do have a budget every week, which is sort of a task that they're not used to and then I come back and am able to sit down with Susan and if we need, speak with Michael, but it does sort of tighten things up a little bit and helps to project FY nineteen, which we're starting to do now, so that we are a little bit ahead of it.
Makes a lot of sense, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget transfers, is there a second? Second. Second by Dr. Callis, any discussion on the budget transfers? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have budget update, is there anything early you'd like to say about the budget?
Just in terms of the budget that you receive in your packet monthly where it shows the actuals and it shows whether there is a deficit in a line item or whether there is fifty percent use, seventy-two percent use, I just would like the committee to know that we, we do go through each one of those line items and at times where you would see a deficit of X amount of dollars during that time process, the second that's identified, we're working on ways to cover that from other line items as you saw with budget transfers today, we're also working closely with the town to complete the FY seventeen close, there were some encumbrances that were for June bills that were, had to be liquidated and are now in the FY eighteen budget, I'm working with Michael to clarify what those are, why those bills were not paid in FY seventeen and how they are impacting the FY eighteen budget, so that we're making those adjustments week to week as opposed to, you know, month to month and Susan is constantly being asked questions by me, I don't know how long my newness will last in terms of asking those questions over and over again, but as we, as we have fully staffed now with the exception of some of our cross and oppositions, we are able to look at the delta of teachers who have either resigned or teachers who'd have to go to, to another district, people that are on maternity leave and so we're balancing out our salaries as well, so as soon as we can flush some of that out, we'll have a better picture of how to offset some of those line items that are in that budget, but month to month when you receive the actuals per month, if there are any questions on those, I'm, I'm happy to try to, to go through those and answer those with you, so.
Any questions or comments about the budget for Superintendent Howard? Thank you, next on the agenda, we have buildings and grounds requests, we have parks and recs requesting the ATC gymnasium for boys and girls basketball, grades four through eight, Monday through Thursday, October sixteenth through November twenty-first, first, from six to nine P M., the request comes with appropriate paperwork and a purchase order. Is there a motion by Mr. Parent, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Caballero, any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have subcommittee reports, so Dr. Callis and I had, had a great policy subcommittee meeting a couple weeks ago and we actually have some recommendations on some of the policies that were in our packet at the last meeting that are regarding transportation and buses and there are some adjustments we'd like to make. The first one, we have this, and I can email you these minutes, so, if, you know, don't, don't worry too much, cause it's all, I have it all down here, but we have two student conduct on school buses policies, one is file EEAC, sorry, EEAEC and the next one is EAEC-r, which I'm guessing means revision, the first one has a date of eleven, two thousand and twelve and the second one doesn't have any date, they're, they're close to each other, so what we'd like to recommend is that we, we make these one policy or at least clean it up so that there's not two policies floating around in the book and use the one that ends in R with the addition of all loose items must be in backpacks and I think the way we should proceed is that we'll do the first reading of the full policy, so we don't necessarily, I would say, need to vote on the recommendations tonight, we'll have a full policy for you to read in the next meeting, but there's just some adjust, you know, kind of minor adjustments, there's also superintendent, it, it addresses that any incident for behavior is reported on the proper form to the school principal and it does say that a form approved by the superintendent, I'd just like to see a copy of that form as an amendment to the policy. So that's kind of number one. The next policy we have is the drug and alcohol testing for school bus and commercial vehicle drivers, the, the reference from the state regulation is from nineteen ninety-one and we just wanted to refer that to the superintendent and to the transportation director to make sure that there hasn't been an update since nineteen ninety-one on this policy and I think that we should just follow what the state is recommending anyway, instead of making up our own necessarily. The school bus safety program, we thought could use a little help, because there was less than ten percent of our students taking the school bus, we have this sort of comprehensive, you know, all students must be instructed on proper and safe conduct while aboard the bus, some students may never take the bus, some students may take it only on field trips or for sporting events and other activities, so we cleaned up the language on that as well, which will just be in the first reading next, next month. Walkers and riders, we are making a recommendation that, this is a one-sentence policy, it says the Winter Public Schools will provide transportation for all students who live one and one-half miles or more from the school they attend, I believe we are following the state regulation which is two miles or more above one point nine miles or more. Um, I believe we are following the state regulation, which is, um, two miles or more above one point nine miles or more, um, in terms of who we're providing transportation to. So we'd like to update the language on that policy to reflect what we're actually, um, following. Use of prize, private vehicles on school business. Uh, this again is sort of a one-sentence policy, but we'd like to, to amend it to no teacher, administrator, coach, employee, or volunteer or other representative of the school is authorized to use his or her vehicle to transport students as passengers in said vehicle to or from school functions. And so, um, the language in the current policy is just not quite as clear as that. So, um, we'll give you, that to you next meeting in a, in a first, uh, reading for the approval. Um, the next policy we have, um, it's super important, I think, I don't think it needs to be changed, I just wanna make sure it's being enforced. It's the policy regarding motor vehicle idling on school grounds. We wanted to make sure this was restated, um, that there, no vehicle should be idling within one hundred feet of a school building, um, for obvious health reasons. And we do know that with the new waiting and turning lane at Gorman Fort Banks, um, I just know from experience that people idle there anyway. But, um, I wanna make sure that's reviewed, um, and enforced to the, the ability that we're able to enforce it. I think it's, you know, I don't expect Mrs. Pearson to be running up and down the sidewalk telling people not to be idling. And I know that we don't have the necessarily police force to be doing that either. But I, I do want at least maybe parents to reinforce it with each other that, um, while you're waiting five, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes for your child to get out of school, you should not be idling in that turn and waiting and turn lane that has been, um, uh, added this year, right?
Yeah. I'll check for proper signage down there, I know we put signage up about, let's say it's about seven years ago. And there's still probably signage here, but not, not, maybe not large, I'll send you a reminder to pass. We are just a reminder of that.
Just a reminder, yep. I wanna say that is it. Um, that is it, except for, um, in reviewing these policies, I'd like to recommend that when a policy is, um, revised, that it have a, a date and a signature from the chairperson of the school committee so that we know when it was last looked at and revised. I think that our, our policies tend to be, um, there's not a trail of when they've been looked at. And there's not like good, um, documentation of when we updated and who was responsible for looking at it. And, you know, putting a date on it would at least allow us to go back to that school committee's minutes and review how it was looked at and what discussion happened. And, and, you know, the documentation of revision, I think, is important. So I'd like, on, with that, I'd like to make a motion that when we, from here on, when we do revise a policy, I would like to make sure that, um, on the latest updated version, we have the date that it was passed by the school committee and the signature of the chairperson.
Second.
Second by Dr. Callis, any discussion on that motion, Mr. Perrin?
I like the idea, I just think we need to go a little further and, and start having a tickler system like we were talking about. That reminds us that this policy needs to go to the policy committee. An outlook calendar, you put it in a year ahead of the time and it kind of flashes up that it needs to go back to policy for review. So at least we're doing it at least once a year, so we don't end up with the problem we are now with all of these outdated policies.
The difficulty is figuring out which policies need to be updated. So the idea of having the policy review, um, you know, that I, I recommended was for sort of that general reason that what comes by me as policies known to need to be revised, whether it's a change in state law or federal law around, uh, around anything, that we're able to, to do that pretty frequently. And I know that some systems, and I'll, I'll check around, I know some systems have those electronically. But typically, school policy books are this big, so you have existing policy, um, that does need to be revisited. And there's hundreds and hundreds of pages of, of that policy. And so the, I, I agree to be able to update it, can, you know, continuously is important. But what policies expire and what policies don't sort of technically expire. And the ones that don't expire are the ones that are revised by school law.
Yeah.
You know, so I can check in to see if there is, has to be some sort of a system.
There, there is, there's a lot of systems that are commercially available, I was just kind of thinking of simplify it. But just that we constantly kind of bring it back to the policy committee and review it. I know a lot of them, some of them won't need to be changed at all.
Right, right.
And then we can, we can have a, you know, a review date, twelve months, twenty-four months. So that we keep coming back to it, looking at it, you know, not, not on your shoulders, but on the, on the, uh...
Well, it's the school committee's responsibility really, but I think that, um, we tend to, uh, our policies either come from a new regulation or in response to a curse. And then we look and we say, oh, that, that, we have a policy on that, but it actually is not what we would have decided, this policy was written twenty years ago. So I think that Superintendent Howard's, um, plan to, you know, to put a few of these in our packets each week, the ones that seem most timely, is a good one. Um, and, you know, I, I think to do more than that would be overwhelming. And I think that the people that are on this committee don't have the time to, to put in to really go in through a whole binder of policies. But I think to do a few at a time and put into that tickler system would be a good idea.
That's, that's my thought, is the ones, you know, the high-ticket items.
Yeah.
But they do have software that goes out, actually sends it out to your teachers, review it, get back, sign off, you've gotten that policy. You know, it can even go to students, and it kind of tickles you with the time it comes to review it, so.
And then there's documentation that teachers have reviewed it, yeah. Alright, so...
Seconded motion on the table.
Yes, so the motion to at least at this point, date and have a signature from the chairperson of the committee, um, for any revision or new policy, um, beginning, you know, with these next set of policies. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye, aye, opposed, abstentions, thank you.
Um, ma'am chairperson, so we had also talked briefly about the set of policies that had been in our packet before the transportation policies. Um, and I don't know if I'm doing this out of turn, but I'd like to make a recommendation that the anti or the prioritization policy go to the policy subcommittee for updating, cause I don't think that is, um, I think that probably some teachers are connecting with students on Facebook and we need to figure out a realistic policy.
Okay. So your motion is to, um, have the policy subcommittee look at the entry for prioritization of the current policy? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Beckett, any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye, aye, opposed, abstentions, thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
And then one other thing is that, um, the first set of policies that were in our packets prior to the transportation policies had references to John Moser within those policies. So I wonder if Miss Hemmings, you should take a look at those policies that came out about a month ago in our packets, um, and just check for, make sure that they don't reference anybody by name since superintendents can change. Thank you.
Okay, next we have superintendent's report, update on goals.
Thank you very much. Um, so as, as you all know, I had three, um, goals that I had proposed to the committee with several indicators in each goal that were, um, set across the whole entire school year for me to be able to, um, meet each one of those goals. So initially, my, um, plan was to give you a verbal update in December. And I think that this is a nice, uh, way to give you a brief overview of how close we're coming to some of these, um, meeting some of these goals. However, um, each one of the goals is designed to be a year-long process, so I'll give you a, a little bit of an update as to where I am. So, uh, and it will be, um, semi-brief. So in terms of identifying, uh, goal one, my professional practice goal, which was gonna be to identify, share vision, and a district, strategic district plan across, uh, the entire K to twelve, pre-K to twelve system that we have, involves such things as instructional leadership, management, and operations, and professional culture. So to date, um, I have been meeting with principals one-to-one in their buildings, uh, weekly, Tuesdays and, um, on Tuesdays, I meet from eight-thirty to nine-thirty, eight o'clock to nine-thirty, uh, with Eileen Pearson at the Gorman Fort Banks. And then after that, from ten to eleven-thirty with Brian Herri. Um, each meeting has a, a combination of topics that we go through, such as staff highlights, concerns, um, staffing evaluations, problems of practice, curriculum updates, um, and, and the most important piece, and the most enjoyable piece of the whole visit is building walkthroughs. So my ability to go with a principal into classrooms and see some best practice teaching, talking about what we see. Do we see, uh, goals on the wall, do we see curriculum, am I seeing, um, you know, students engaged in learning? And it is not evaluative by any means, I do not carry a, a piece of paper or a pen with me, uh, or even, um, the walkie-talkies that Mr. Moser had before. I do carry a cellphone just in case of an emergency. Um, but I'm able to see classroom teachers in practice and meet students, um, and really get sort of the culture of that building. The meetings on Thursdays are with Mr. Crombie and Brian Curley, again, in eight to nine-thirty, and then at ten to eleven-thirty. Do the same level of meeting weekly with the pupil personnel director, Jen O'Connell, where we talk about, um, it, more in-depth items such as reviewing transportation costs, reviewing out-of-district placements, reviewing sort of how we're going about, uh, sending out RFPs in terms of pricing, some, some legislative stuff that's going on, uh, in, in, you know, the state house in terms of, uh, different changes in the law and how that might impact us. And then evaluation and, and how evaluation is going of programs, program evaluation, district-wide number of service providers we have, how we're utilizing them. And in all settings, and, and the athletic director also, I, I have my, uh, meeting with him on, uh, every two weeks. And then starting in October, it'll be weekly because we're moving on to the, um, discussion around the middle field and the management of that field. So being able to have those discussions in that one-to-one setting opens up, um, our weekly, sorry, our monthly meetings with principals as a group for more district-wide issues, so they have my one-to-one attention during the week, where we can kind of solve some building, um, issues that they may be having. I'll talk about some best practice and have, uh, some outcomes of that meeting. And then the more global district-wide meetings where we're talking about things that matter to each principal are much more focused because we're not spending time talking about individual buildings, because we've already done that during the week. Um, so being able to create some consistency of practice, pre-K to twelve, so transitioning from grades, uh, two to three, transitioning from grades five to six, and then from eight to nine. A lot of that work is being done in those, in more of the principal alone buildings. And then twice a month, bringing in the assistant principals and the E T Ls, or the, the chief people for special education, along with the principals. Again, to have a wider discussion, really more focused on evaluation of programs and staff. And consider, again, just consistency of practice and change in looking at, um, procedures that we have or lack thereof. Um, and the need to revamp some of the procedures that we have, or at least put in writing some of the procedures that exist that we all know of, but practice somewhat differently. The idea of that is to be able to have our parents, um, know, even when you're moving from school to school, that we are sharing the same type of practice, whether it be general education, special education, transportation, discipline, uh, social emotional learning. Key to that, uh, is being able to speak a, a lot of the same language and share ideas in a setting that is solely focused on district-wide versus those individual building meetings. So, uh, management and operations, some of the updates on that, uh, had a lot of time to be able to go through, um, a lot of the procedures that we do have in terms of, uh, writing purchase orders, um, things like, uh, putting in requests for technology support, uh, residence. You know, what does our residency look like, what's the policy or procedure per building, uh, how are we enforcing that? Um, we have had a tremendous amount of work done on, um, job descriptions, so looking, and when we talk about the fiscal systems, looking at how we utilize our stipends, what are those used for? A lot of my one-to-one meetings, uh, I'm, I'm able to talk, what do you have for stipends in your building, how do you use those? What's the expectation of those teachers? Do the teachers who have stipends know what the expectation is? How do we know when we're gonna pay those people? Where's the accountability factor for that? The end result of that has been development of job descriptions for stipends, so that if you do apply for a stipend, you know exactly what you're getting yourself into and what's expected out of that. It's also allowed us to streamline some of those stipends, and if we're not using them, we don't need to have them. Or if there is a different focus that we wanna take, uh, that we're able to do that. In terms of law, ethics, and policy, um, still focusing in on, on educating the principals and assistant principals on things like homelessness. Um, school, students who are homeschooled, you know, tightening up some of that work in, in terms of holding our parents accountable. If you're, have your child at home and you're homeschooling, what are we expecting of you? Are we following the proper procedure, uh, in, in checking on students? So that if in fact they do return to us, that we are having a student return and reintegrated into the system that is ready, uh, and, and able to meet the standards and be able to be evaluated on the standards as to really, uh, entry point into our school. And so a lot of, lot of good work, uh, being done on that. Residency has been, um, we've changed up the residency paperwork a little bit, tightened that up a little bit. I was able to work with Judy Fono on our student information system, did a lot of work around who's responsible for what fields in I-PASS, which should improve, um, some of our grant funds, uh, if we can accurately identify where students are, what, who's checked off as homeless, who's checked off as special education, if you have a five oh four plan, uh, if you have, uh, you know, any other status, whether it's an ELL status or Title One status. I'm spending time with all the folks who do all that data entry and allowing them to outline what their own responsibility is, has really cleared up a lot of questions, um, for the secretarial staff and made folks feel more comfortable as to what their role is when we enroll a new student or when we start a new school year. Also, uh, under the, uh, policy, there, I've informed them all that we're working on policy, so if there is anything they see, uh, that needs to be tweaked with their department, that's my attention so that I can run forward it to you. Um, professional culture, working, um, together with the principals around what the core values are in their building and what the professional culture is, and, and helping them figure out how to figure that out, uh, through the development of, uh, surveys. So we're working on a lot of school surveys with principals specific to their building. So not evaluative of them, but more evaluative of the school culture itself, so that they know where to build from. Um, and eventually having a district-wide policy that speaks to overall core values and the expectation of the school culture that is supported by families, students, and staff. So I promise you I'll be brief, but let's jump to goal number two, which is instructional, um, leadership. Uh, what, the walkthrough process, uh, has led to, um, questions that we are able to sit back when we come back to, uh, our meetings. Again, an hour and a half, we do some walkthroughs, you talk about some problems, but then we come back and recap. Has led to discussions around professional learning communities and the need to revisit certain things, building by building. Whether it's, um, school to career, I think we've talked about that a little bit, the need to strengthen that. And just listening to principals and my giving them some feedback on how to get that process going, looking at different, um, interests of students for some of the clubs and some of those stipended activities, how do you then vet out what's the most important to the students as a whole and what the parents are looking for? So you will see in the, uh, near future that we will be rolling out surveys, we're gonna try to use our I T department to help us with that so that we can have parents be able to respond electronically, but also have our students be able to sit down at a specific time during the school day and be able to give their feedback and their opinion. Um, so that when we do perhaps adjust a hand, a, a course outline, a course offering book, that we are able to articulate that this is something that the students have asked us for. Uh, and so we are gonna dig deeper into that and see how that, you know, goes from grade eight through twelve, if we're looking at the high school handbook. And I say grade eight because we want the eighth graders to talk about their, themselves going on to, to create that. Communication, um, with the assistance of the, the Title One, um, grant writer, Kathy Delvento has been very helpful. I've had the opportunity to read all the grants that we have from Title One to Title Two A to Title Three, uh, the two forty special ed grant, two ninety-eight, two seventy-four. Every grant that we have in the district, had the opportunity to read through those, each, um, each grant to see what the focus was. And the focus was pretty much, um, in my opinion, kind of all over the map and a little bit siloey. So it's specific to certain buildings or, um, or, or certain programming that folks who are writing those grants are, you know, interested in writing about. And that's helpful, however, when we start to spend those dollars on professional development or on transportation or on parent workshops or on student activities, um, they really need to be tied to the goals, uh, of the district as well as the parameters of the grant. And so being able to read through them was very helpful. And then I offered, um, the folks who write those grants to sit with them, uh, because it's so early on and my gathering information from all the principals, if we're gonna write grants that are gonna support professional development or teacher-directed activities, we wanna make sure that everybody's sort of on the same page in terms of that professional development. And so that we're not just saying we're gonna air market for, uh, curriculum review, or we're gonna air market for social emotional learning. What does each building actually need and how does that tie in to what? what I believe is sort of a collective vision of the school? So I was able to sit with, uh, Jen O'Connell, who's a special ed director, and that's more of a sort of data analysis of how the dollars need to be spent to cover our special ed costs. And then with, uh, Kathy Delvento around Title One, um, and supporting our ELL students with Title, uh, two and, and Title III, and then recognizing that we were also eligible this year for Title Four, uh, which is an additional $10,000 that can be focused towards social emotional learning. So having the, the time to sit with those folks to really write those grants and lay those grants out, uh, the way that they will provide the biggest feedback to the school, but also then to train the principals on the value of a grant and what it means to have grants and, and how grants can disappear in, um, in a nine-C cut. Grants can disappear overnight and how if we are, um, using these, we're using them to supplement our, what it is that we value very strongly and that we are able, if we were to lose those monies, uh, to be able to try to recover them in, in some other way. So that has been really good work. I think the principals have appreciated having a hand in the grant. So although they're meeting with me and I'm putting my hand in it, it is helpful. And Kathy Delvento and, and Jen both write very well. Um, so they have been super supportive and, and educating me as well. Um, communication, um, just a, a little bit further, partnering with many people, CASA, um, having several meetings with CASA, the Adjustment Councilors, the folks at, uh, the library. I met with a, um, parent group of, of women who had done some rollout at the library with some parent, uh, parent offerings around anxiety and around, uh, school adjustment. They are willing to now work with Anita Preble, um, with her grant that she writes for, uh, early engagement of students and to kind of co-mingle some of these activities that we're doing so we can engage more parents. Um, working on the new parent network. Um, Anita Preble has some great ideas around that. It, it involves our ELL parents as well. Many of our ELL parents are new to the community, but then there's a whole other subset of people that just moved here and they don't know how to sign up for hockey and they don't know how to get taekwondo and they don't know that there's music lessons out there. So, um, we have put, yeah, parent liaison written into the title, probably even screwed up, but the, I think we put it into the Title II-A grant so that the parent liaison is a bilingual educator, uh, here in the school district who works after school in our after-school programs and her sole job is to be the liaison to many of our parents who are new or non-English speaking so that they feel welcomed into the community and there's somebody that they can go to to find out, where do I buy coat cuts? Where do you, how do I get a train? Um, and all of those things don't seem like they're connected to school. They really are because the anxiety that our kids come to school with, um, because their parents don't know how to access after-school programming. They don't know where to go to get a winter coat. They don't know that we have a food pantry if need be, or they don't know that they can sign their kids up for hockey and this is how you go about it. Um, so I think that that is going to take on a life of its own. That's consumed me a little bit, um, because people are sort of coming out of the woodwork to help, which is great, but it needs to be organized and it needs to be communicated to parents so that they know what we have, um, and, and pretty consistent. And so more to come on that.
Do you, can I just interrupt you?
Sure.
Do you feel like you, you have someone that you can sort of delegate that responsibility of oversight to?
So, um... In, in its entirety. So I'm working on another one of my goals, personal goals, is to let go. I, I feel like I sing that song in my head all the time, let it go. Um, I have a little bit of difficulty with that until it's up and running. But yes, a big step for me was to work with Kathy to identify a person who we could pay to do this job. This is a huge job to be that liaison to parents because we're asking you to take cell phone calls, phone, you know, phone calls on your own cell phone at six o'clock at night for a parent who doesn't know how to pay for a field trip or who to talk to that their child is now on medication or is going to be missing school. So, uh, we built that into the grant. The larger piece of it, Anita Preble is very helpful in organizing, um, the larger rollout to the parents. Um, eventually I will let it go, but right now it's sort of still sitting right here because it is, it is one of my goals to make sure that we expand those opportunities. So eventually we'll get there.
And I think just, um, we've had lots of conversations about a grant writer in general. So...
So, yeah.
And the absence of a grant writer in our district. So, um, it just makes me think, like, who is it that you could delegate this to and know that it's going to be rolled out the way that you would have rolled it out?
Right. So the grants themselves are, are well-written by, by both Kathy Delvento and Anita Preble, like to grant, as well as, uh, Jen O'Connell. So you want to tap your resources that you have to continue to write grants. The, the research in, in finding the grants is the issue. So you have to know what your sort of school district capacity is in terms of what you're eligible for, what's out there, and dig, dig, dig that department of that website because that's where the majority of the money is. There might be little one and $2,000 grants. Sometimes the work associated with writing a small grant far exceeds the benefit that you get back and, you know, in terms of the record-keeping and whatnot. But some of these larger grants, um, I'm, I'm lucky that I have access to them from a, a different board that I sit on. So I do know sometimes what's coming. Um, and I, I can tell you that the 21st century after-school grant that we have is pretty epic. And, and I don't know how long that's going to stay around, but we need to figure out what to do when it's gone. And because when we lose that, we, we may have a struggle because our students need after-school. And then just to, um, finish up and, and I could go on for days as you know, um, protocols, again, that we, we, the development of protocols has taken sort of the uneasy feeling off of the shoulders of principals. If there's a protocol on what to do with the 504 student versus a student with an IEP, um, how do you, how do you understand that? How do you explain that to parent? It's amazing when you just put something down on a piece of paper and hand it to somebody and say, this is not a policy, it's a protocol, which means it can be, it can be played with a little, but this is what we do in the winter public schools. And if it's consistent, maybe a little bit different based on age level, but you want that consistent message sent to parents that this is what it looks like at the elementary level, middle school level and high school level. Just lessens the confusion. Uh, we're working on things like platforms, um, parent communication, what's used at the high school, what's used at the middle school, conversation with principals and result maybe that we choose a platform, uh, for our, for our staff because parents need to know that, that something like that is consistent. So there's a lot more. Um, I have about thirty-two pages of bullets that I keep track of, um, sort of what we're doing every day. There's a, really a lot of good work going on. I, I would not be surviving in this seat if it wasn't for, uh, the principals and the central office staff that keep my, my head on and kick me out of here when I need to be kicked out. Um, that's sort of a, a general update. I keep a binder upstairs of my own, uh, that has, uh, pages in it, the little plastic pieces of paper that you can flip through to see just sort of that evidence so that when you're ready to conduct an evaluation of me, you can look at the goal, you can look at the indicator and you'll be able to find a piece of evidence that talks about community involvement or, um, instructional leadership. You'll be able to refer it. So I can provide that to the committee, um, when you're ready to do the formal review at the end of the school year.
Any questions at this point, regardless of what's...
So that is a box.
Keep up the good work.
We appreciate your, the report on that. Thank you.
Just a quick update.
Okay. Do you want to move on to personnel? Or do you, is there more superintendent's report?
Nope. I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Sorry.
Wasn't curriculum usually like that?
Oh, there, so there was nothing under curriculum?
Oh, okay.
This month, did you, or this week, whatever, this meeting?
Um, well, I thought we were going to hear about the math curriculum progress. So maybe, should there be a curriculum subcommittee meeting or?
I, I would recommend that.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Do that.
And I'd be happy to attend that.
Okay. So we'll refer that to the form subcommittee. Perfect. Okay. So we'll move on to personnel.
So on to personnel, um, appointments. We have filled an Algebra I substitute position as of today. Um, and the speech and language substitute position for maternity leave has been filled as well as of today. Um, resignations, we had one resignation, someone who had asked for a leave of absence has now formally resigned. Um, and so that position, um, is, was posted as a long-term sub and I will be speaking with, um, Matt Crombie as to whether or not we want to wait till the end of the school year or to repost that now. Um, retirements, we have none. Postings, we did post for the crossing guard. We had eight applications for crossing guards. Um, Ms. O'Connell will be interviewing, um, all eight of, of those people if they accept the interview and we will have them in their spots as soon as possible, uh, so that we are, uh, up to speed. It's funny, they, there were no, we had few to, to not know applications...
Right.
...uh, prior to this. And then, uh, as everybody knows, we had an, an unfortunate incident where a parent, uh, was, was struck, um, and, and thank God he's okay. Um, however, it sort of heightened the conversation and so I think parents were more willing. Most of the people who applied are parents, which is great. And so I'll update you on that, but we're hoping to have those positions filled, uh, no later than Friday.
Great.
Um, I applaud the staff that has been out there in the weather and has been covering those spots. Mr. Harriedy, uh, did a great job in begging some staff members to get out there, provided some cool vests.
Right.
Don't keep them forever, but, um, they had nice vests to wear so they felt safe.
Thank you.
In terms of, uh, other postings, the, like I said, the Algebra I teacher, uh, who is on a maternity leave, although we filled that position one time, uh, we have had the need to fill it again. And so therefore that substitute position has been filled. Um, we've changed the schedule up a little bit, the original schedule for that person. And we have asked some of our, um, colleagues, our senior colleagues who have been here for a while to pick up some of the classes as we, because we were concerned we weren't going to find a, a certified substitute, but I'm happy to report that we have. We're still going to go with the plan of, uh, Mr. Crombie had changed some schedules around and both Mr. Beck and Ms. Harrington, um, have, uh, decided that they would be happy to help out. And so they're taking, uh, some of the courses that he felt would be better positioned, uh, by them. So... And I believe, I believe that's it.
Okay. Great. Um, under new business, we have the, um, donation for the Coach Ronald Spiny, um, display, which you've already taken care of tonight. Under unfinished business, we have the transportation RFP.
So that, um, transportation RFP is going to be discussed in subcommittee, I believe, on Wednesday.
Wednesday at five p.m.
On Wednesday. Um, and so I am, I am prepared to provide, you know, some, some feedback, um, regarding what I have read and done some, a little bit of an analysis on, um, how much money we're spending. So you'll have that out in front of you. I asked Michael, um, today. He's going to get back to me tomorrow with cost. One thing that I really couldn't dig up was the chargeback for cost of fuel because I think it's important to add that in, uh, to the total cost, uh, as well as sort of a history of, of employment and how much money we may have spent. I know what we're spending this year, um, but I don't know what the past is. And then obviously looking at that, uh, proposal, that RFP, um, also looking at the athletic schedule and the field trip, sort of a general idea of what we do field trip-wise and athletics. So we have a sense of those sort of mandated services and as well as the two, you know, 1.8 mile, um, transportation rule and how many students we have living outside that area. And then everybody will have the full amount of information, uh, to be able to look at that proposal and, and transportation as a whole. It will not include special ed transportation, but what I can tell you is we have done a tremendous amount of work on special ed transportation and, um, changing up, uh, some of our practices for cost savings, which will come at another, at another report, but, um, may enter into that as a next subcommittee.
Good.
Great. So we'll look forward to the Billings and Grounds Subcommittee on Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. And is that the high school conference room?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. And we are back to public comment. Mrs. Chavez?
Hi.
Hi.
First of all, I'd like just to request that, um, Mrs. Callis speak louder.
Dr. Callis.
And, uh, Mrs. Howard to keep her voice set up. And even Keel, I was able to understand eighty percent. Sometimes I really have to strike. I'm sorry.
Go, go.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to ask, and I don't want any answers, I just want to ask. I know utilities were an issue last year and I'm just curious as to how it has gone so far this year at the middle school, high school. I know, um, last year it was under budget. This year money was added, but I'm just asking if that is going to be enough now to, I know it's a little bit girly for Susan, but it is something I would just, you know, be curious as to see. Um, with the terrific influx of kids at high school, is there enough Chromebooks there? I guess that would be a question. I know last year, um, at the beginning of the year, there were not enough Chromebooks. Something to do with the manufacturer. The kids that were freshmen had to wait, I believe, till November before their Chromebooks were issued. I'm just asking if everybody at the high school, um, does have...
If you have enough.
...Chromebooks. And now I heard Mrs. Howard speak about the school census and that does make me feel better. Um, with the amount of kids that have come in, you know, how many of them are really with the presidents? And it sounds like that the school department is taking care of that.
Um, I can tell you, um, the superintendent and I have had discussions about utilities and, and the plan, um, has been to refer that to the budget subcommittee once we have somewhat of a handle on, which is, you know, soon we should have a budget subcommittee to talk about the way things are looking. We wanted to get some more data. Um, I don't know, Superintendent Howard, do, are we one-to-one with Chromebooks at the high school at this point?
So we are. We have to purchase seventy additional, sixty-five additional.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five?
That was close.
Seventy-five additional Chromebooks this year that, um, for a host of reasons, for enrollment, certainly not seventy-five new students enrolling, uh, but also Chromebooks that, um, had been sort of damaged beyond repair, um, and then an underestimate of, uh, the class size of the, of the...
Right, right.
And so we have, uh, ordered those. They have come and they have been rolled out. So I, I feel, um, I feel good about that, that we are one-to-one. Um, we're working on adjusting the budget to make sure that we can cover the cost, uh, of those Chromebooks. And in terms of residency, um, I can assure you that new students who have come into the district, um, there have been residency checks, which have been somewhat new and uncomfortable for our community members, but the law is very clear that we have the right to inspect, uh, if we have any reason to believe a child or, or a student does not live here that, within the community, uh, and lay their head here the majority of the week. So, um, that's been a little bit touchy, but I, I can tell you Officer Amstead and Nora Grance, who is our, uh, attendance officer, um, have, have agreed that as long as there is support behind their findings, which there is, um, that, that they will continue to visit homes, uh, and, and ask questions. And again, we're protecting all of our students, including those students who are registering. So, um, that's the message that we're sending to our parents.
And I attended today my first, um, school year of site council meeting at the middle school and it sounds like that they're all separated there right now. Um, Mr. Curley did get that, the Chromebooks that he had sent out. He had sent out five that needed to be repeated, not through, um, any destruction. They just needed to be repeated. So he has 500 Chromebooks right now that he has available, um, to him. And one policy he did change down there, I don't know, kids do not get their Chromebook for the day anymore. Now, at each classroom they go into, they're getting a, a different, um, Chromebook, which I think is working out better from what I understand. And just on a personal note, um, on Sunday morning, um, Mr. Crombie was good enough to open the high school so that with a high school class of 1957 could talk. And I just wanted to thank you very, very much for that. I can't tell you the comments that were made about what a beautiful, beautiful school it is.
That's really nice. Thank you.
Isn't it nice to have something nice?
Really nice.
And being able to show it off.
Is there any further public comment? So we're on to public relations. I'll start with you, Mr. Rikia.
Well, I just think that, uh, for those of us that went and participated in the I Love Wilted Festival, it was spectacular. It was probably one of the better events ever in the center. And, uh, I got a little wet in the dunk tank. I understand they raised about fifteen hundred dollars just in the dunk tank alone. And, um, that goes to the veterans pantry and, and they also, I guess, donate that same amount to CASA, which is great. And I guess overall, they made like nine, over $9,000 to give to the veterans pantry. So it was a spectacular event. I, they should, they should do it every year, without a doubt.
Um, just a reminder, we are approaching breast cancer awareness month. It is a, uh, subject that's very important to me as my mother is a two-time survivor. I know that Speaker DeLeo is a pro, uh, sponsor in transportation to the Susan G. Komen Walk, and I hope that's something our students and citizens take advantage of.
I believe on the October sixteenth school committee meeting, the middle field committee will be, uh, coming in to try to give a presentation. We'll have a representative from Skanska, who's our project manager, and also, um, a couple of members of the committee just to give an update to the school committee and to the public as to the status of the project, completion date and, uh, how everything is looking. So I think that that will be, uh, beneficial for you guys.
Thank you. Looking forward to that. All right. Motion to adjourn?
Somewhat.
Bye, Mr. Rikia. Second, bye. What's your guy Bianca? All very good. Bye.